Good evening, everyone. Today is September 18th. The time is 6:01 and this is the Acushna Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the Town's YouTube page via the cable channel. And we're attempting to be live via Zoom. We're having slight technical difficulties because we keep getting kicked off. We have people working on it. All right, let's continue anyways. Can I get a motion over the planning board meeting?
Motion open to meet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have a quorum tonight. Can we get everybody to introduce themselves?
Hi, Victoria Alfaro, Town Planner.
Steve Boucher, member?
Mark Francois, Chairman.
Ryan DeChamps, member?
All right, yep, we do have a quorum. The minutes, we need to approve the minutes since September 4th. Only you and I were here, Pete, Brian, only you and I were here, Steve was not.
So we can't vote?
No, because we can't vote.
We don't have that yet?
No.
You got the whistle makes me?
You're absolutely right, I never think about that. So we'll put this on for the next meeting when we have a quorum to vote on. Moving on. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. We had a public hearing scheduled for this evening that unfortunately will be continued. A continued site plan review and special permit for 1094 Main Street, also known as Clem's Way, map 7, lot 15, dated October 2nd, 2025. The reasoning for this continuation is that special permits need a majority vote of the board, which is four members. As you can see, we only have three members in attendance tonight. Unfortunately, we are all volunteers on this board. We all have jobs and sometimes...
They're getting away.
Jobs getting away. And unfortunately, we could not have a majority vote tonight. So we informed the proponent and we are going to reschedule this public hearing to our next meeting, which is Thursday, October 2nd. Do we need to make a vote on that or do we just...
Yes, we need a motion to continue.
Can we get a motion to continue this public hearing for Clem's Way to Thursday, October 2nd?
Motion to continue.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So the public hearing scheduled for Clem's Way at 1094 Main Street will be continued to Thursday, October 2nd. I'm hopeful that we have four members and we can continue with this special permit. Okay, moving on. Discussion. Discussion and vote on ratifying submission of the senior clerk funding warrant article. So, as you know, we have been without a clerk since, I think, February of this year. We were, we, Victoria and I, were in the process of hiring a new clerk and then we were told by the town administrator to kind of put the brakes on that. Then we went to spring meeting and due to budget cuts and whatnot, they are trying to combine our clerk with another clerk and... I agreed to it back at the spring meeting. Since then, we've had multiple meetings with other departments and department heads and we're starting to realize that it's just not something that's going to work. It's just not something that is feasible. All other departments have at least one full-time clerk and I think asking for a part-time clerk for the planning department isn't much to ask for. So we have approximately 4,000 and change in our budget right now. We need approximately 9,000, an additional 9,000 and change to hire someone to get us to the spring meeting, where we will then in turn ask for the rest of the monies, which is another 7,000 or so. But just for now, for this fall meeting, we are, I had asked Victoria to write up an article for the warrant, asking for the funding of the 9,000 and change. I apologize, I don't know the exact number. So we can hire our own part-time clerk. That's it in a nutshell. Do you gentlemen have anything to ask, discuss? We need to vote and it gets unanimous between the three of us to get that article sent to the select board. Any questions?
Nope, other than, oh, I'll say no other than, but hours of the part-time clerk.
The hours, it's only a part-time clerk, so it's a 19 and a half hour position?
I guess how they're going to split it up.
Oh, that's something that eventually, what I would like to see, I'd like to see the hours be more or less the same as what Haley had before she left, which is approximately, I think she was doing like four hours a day.
Okay, yeah, morning or afternoon.
Right, that's something that we would negotiate with the person. I mean, sometimes you have mothers that have mother's hours that might want to apply for a part-time position. They can bring their children to school in the morning, you know, put in three, four hours at the office and then go pick up their children in the afternoon. I like to be, I like to have the doors open at the planning board every day for X amount of hours and we have a sign posted and somebody would be there. As you know, Victoria is part-time and she's at the planning board for two days out of the week. She's there for Wednesday and Thursday. It would be nice if we could get a clerk there Monday and Tuesday, you know, four hours or so on each day and also on Friday, just so there's somebody there. Now, whether that's, you know, 10th or whatever or 11th or whatever, but we would post that. But that's kind of how I'd like to see it done. That's how we had it before when Haley was here and I thought it worked quite well. The way that, the way that the town administrator or the select board is thinking of doing it by, and I understand the situation with trying, with budget cuts. This town is always, you know, kind of short on money, especially the way the school always kind of takes everything that we have and I can understand they're trying to make some cuts to the budget. I just think cutting our clerk is not the right place to be making cuts. Victoria is part-time and I would like her to concentrate on looking for money for this town in grants and implementing the master plan once that gets all said and done. And that's going to take a lot of work. So we need our own clerk to do the day-to-day of reaching out to proponents, reaching out to engineers, taking emails, receiving phone calls, everything like that. We, it can't be a clerk that's in another office downstairs or in another part of the building. It has to be somebody that, you know, Victoria can have a one-on-one with in person and in discussion. So I don't think we're asking for very much. It's not a, it's not a highly paid position. So it's not like we're asking for the town to pony up a whole lot of money. We had it in February, it was working just fine at the time. It just so happens that that person left and went, got another job somewhere else. We would just like to continue with the position that we had.
We need another clerk, just like all the other departments need their clerk. I mean, how well would they run if they didn't have their clerks out in front?
Exactly.
You know, so it is kind of, it impedes what this department does.
Agreed, I agree, what Paul said. So I would entertain a motion for the senior clerk funding warrant article.
Motion to put it on the article, put the funding on the article. Do we need to have an exact number for this?
The article does have an exact number. I just don't have the...
Do you want me to pull it up? I can pull it up if that's preferred.
Yeah, if you could, yeah.
Absolutely.
Please.
It's $9,439.10.
I'll make a motion to...
We have a motion, we need a second?
I'll second with the $9,439.10.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, fabulous, thank you, gentlemen. All right. Moving on, also on the discussions. At the last meeting, we were discussing amending, excuse me, amending the Business Village District. We had discussed on, you weren't here for that discussion, Steve. I don't know if you watched it on, watched the meeting on YouTube, but we were discussing on how we'd like to continue the Village District from here on Main Street all the way to Lake Street, the commercial licensing. So make it a commercial district from where it ends now, which I think is shortly after the gas station over here. Continue it all the way to Lake. What are your thoughts on that, Steve?
I am not opposed to it, I just think it's just a matter of wording.
Absolutely.
Just a matter of wording, I mean, basically it's, I, it's, we call it commercial zoning, but what happens when we call it commercial zoning?
Well, everything has to fall under the...
I guess it's, yeah, it's just the wording aspect. It can either be residential, it could be commercial, whatever. Is there a term for, it's basically, it's openly everything except for manufacturing right at this point? Or is commercial going to cover manufacturing as well going down from here to Lake Street?
I think that, if I may just jump in. I think that really depends on what, you know, the board envisions, what they want, what do you want to see on the ground, right, throughout this district? I mean, I know we mentioned, I think we might have been at the previous meeting, but some sort of mixed use component or something like that. So we could even change the name of the district to suit it more, depending on what direction the board goes in. But you're going to want to take a look at what uses are allowed there now. Has this district been used, you know, to its fullest potential? What size are we allowing, that sort of thing? So it's, as of right now, it's kind of open-ended and it's based on what you want to see.
And we do have businesses going all the way from the center of town, actually almost to Lake Street. There's already businesses there.
Yeah, they've been here for forever, so it's just, it's, right opposition to it, just basically, do we call it mixed use again or is it, you know, where somebody wants to get, they get a house and they get a, they want to put up a garage and...
Run a business out of it.
And run a business out of it, right? You know, it's, it's mixed use.
Run a business out of it, or if somebody says a piece of property and they want to put up a small, again, a lot depends on where sewer is and ends. It depends on, you know, what type of business, whether a septic could sustain that type of business and they have enough room for a septic, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things involved. But the way I envision it is if, you know, somebody has a piece of land and they want to put up a small little three-facing storefront, you know, a hairdresser, you know, a small little store or whatever, and then there's apartments above it. If they have the room, if they have the capacity, if there's sewer, if there's not, things like that. That, you know, obviously when I say commercial, we're not going to get, you know, Walmart down the street.
No, no.
That's never going to happen. But if somebody wants to open up a garage, if somebody wants to open up a salon, if somebody wants to, you know, a restaurant, you know, they're there now, just not sure if there, if any new ones can go in. I'd like to make it to where new ones can come in. If somebody buys, hypothetically, if somebody buys the Highlander, again, this is hypothetical, somebody buys the Highlander and they want to make it a restaurant, they should be able to. And they shouldn't be opposed because of, you know, needing special permits or needing this or needing that. If somebody has a decent piece of land and they want to put something there, I think we should allow them to do it, to make a business. Right now, we have, you know, we have Country Hardware, we got liquor stores, we got Rochelle's, we have restaurants, we have ice cream places, we have all those things now. We should just make it easier if somebody wants to do more. That's the only thing I'd like to try to do.
Right. Should that person... I'm with it, believe me, it's there for just about how you go.
We got to work, yeah, and this is something, this is something that's not going to be until the spring warrant. We're going to be, you know, we're going to talk about this every day.
We need to tweak it.
We're going to tweak it between now and then, we're going to discuss this between now and, you know, the spring. Victoria was out a few days last week, she was under the weather. But Victoria's going to give us a map of where the sewer is so we have a better idea of where sewer begins and ends. And in your packet, there's a copy of what the bylaw is now.
Village District.
The Village District, so we could, that would be just what would continue if we wanted to take some wording from this. But that's kind of how I'm looking at it to see if, again, I want to, I want to make the focus of this board, this department, to help our residents by getting more tax income. If we can get more tax income to help the residents of this town, you know, a couple of pennies here, a couple of pennies there. If, if, if we can, you know, with the help of the select board, if we can continue the sewage by looking for grants, by continuing the sewer lines and... That, I think, is kind of our first step towards helping with tax dollars and getting some commercial tax dollars involved. I know a lot of people in town don't like solar, but solar does bring in...
Money.
Money, it brings in good commercial taxes for the town. We have a couple of them in the works, but that's something that can help in the future. And, yeah, that's kind of the way we're going to go. And again, this is just something that we're going to continue to discuss and we're going to tweak and add and change for the next few months before we go into the spring meeting next year.
So part of this whole thing, I think, is going to be revisiting lot sizes as well.
Absolutely.
It's going to run parallel with each other. It's going to, it's going to be like, you're going to, I think it's a matter of changing, you make a couple of changes to make that happen.
Yeah.
Because right now, that's, that's just my thought on, on the whole thing. There's going to be a few things, I think, that are going to, just, one's going to lay, it's going to be done in layers to get to what we need to get to.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why we just, we're going to keep discussing it, we'll keep adding to it. Victoria will keep adding to it. And then once we have the cake all nice, we put it in the oven and we bake it.
I mean, there was, you know, there was discussion the other night, you know, either going, you know, moving down from the 60,000, down either to 45 or 30. If we do it incrementally or, you know, we go back to, I mean, that's how it ramped up. I think it went from 30 to 45 to 60, number of years back. Do we start implementing, you know, tricking the lot size down a little bit? Because we're getting, we have less and less to build on, right?
Yeah, now, would that be the entire town or just certain areas of the town?
See, that's, I'm about certain areas of the town with that. Just, I think, I think there's still be some areas that you may want to keep 60,000 square feet in that mix, you know, just to try to keep some of the rural aspect of it.
Well, like Rick was saying, some of the reasoning to go to the 60,000 square feet was because of the septic.
Yes.
You know, how much the septic takes up on the lot.
And the size of the septic because of our soils in this town.
That's right, that's what's part of the reasoning, you know, you got to make room for the septic. So I, and it goes with what you just said, there'll have to be certain parts of the town that we can do that and others we won't.
Because I think that must set up like that with some of their residential, some of the areas were one size and depending where you are. And again, you have sewers, you have sewer...
A lot of communities have multiple like residential districts.
Yeah.
Actually, it's, this is something I can bring to the next meeting. Serpent, through one of their analysis, they provided a map to me and it actually shows and it highlights all of the lots in the residential A district that do not conform to that lot size. So it's actually quite a bit of them. So that'll also kind of give an idea of what areas are already more, are denser. So that might give us a good starting point.
Yeah, I totally agree because if there is an area, if there's a cluster, a neighborhood, and I don't know, on the off the top of my head, but let's just say there's a neighborhood that is all 10,000 to 15,000 square foot house lots and if there happens to be an empty lot that is the same as the surrounding lots with no house on it, I don't know if that exists in this town, but if it does, then that lot should be, it should be buildable if the neighboring lots are the exact same size.
Yes. And I think we have that, well, that, isn't that part of what the, that new water they have now kind of covers?
No, the ADU, no, it doesn't, it doesn't, but...
Not the ADU, I think you might be referring to the common ownership, the un merging common ownership.
Yeah, un merging the lots.
Yeah, that's very specific, you know, so if there was two lots that were merged, right, they're now un merged, but that doesn't address like the little, you know, existing lots that don't qualify for that, that maybe were created after that or whatever the circumstance may be. So there are still little ones that are, that are empty.
Yeah, I just feel there's, you know, we have certain neighborhoods that are on small lots and again, I don't know if there's any open land in those neighborhoods, but let's just say hypothetically there is. We should, you know, this circle is all, again, making up round numbers, 10,000 to 15,000 square foot house lots. If there's any area that's still available to bill in that, that are that size, we should allow that to...
And even if it abuts in, so it doesn't necessarily have to be in it.
Agreed.
If it abuts in.
We can increase it.
It's like saying, okay, you know, after a setback, you know, if this house is here, then I can put my house there too.
Right.
Okay, so I think the same thing with that, you know, you got these lots all over here, we got this empty lot next door. Why can't we do that?
Absolutely, yeah, no, that's definitely something we should look at. And that is something we've discussed at the last meeting, this is, you know, we can't do everything right away, but the first one we're going to tackle is the commercial district that I'd like to try to open up. That's another one that we'd like to open up and to discuss is, you know, lot sizes in the town. I agree, it needs to be looked at as a whole. I don't feel that if somebody owns a huge farm, now all of a sudden gets to cut them all up into 15,000 square foot lots, that's where I think those should be 60,000, you got to stay a little bit more rural in certain parts of the outer parts of town. I think they should stay at 60,000. And then once you start coming into the district, the village or whatnot, where the lot sizes get smaller, then it can get smaller, but if you're...
What you're saying, so really we should take this district kind of out a little bit, make it migrate a little bit, maybe not all the way out, but let's migrate it out a little bit.
Yeah, and then if you come the next step, instead of 60, go to the 45 and then the outer skirts be at the 60.
Right, that's what I mean, just slowly migrate.
Right, I mean, we can look at a map and obviously get a little bit more detailed, but yeah, make it a little bit easier.
I mean, I don't know if there's, you know, a map out there with basic soil conditions that'll even warrant putting...
That's a whole nother thing.
Well, that's up to the, that's up to the proponent. If that person wants to buy the lot that's buildable at 15,000 square feet, well, now it's his responsibility to get a septic to fit on it. If he can manage it through the border health and, you know, whether it's a rain system, whether it's a pump-out system, regardless of what kind of system he puts in there, as long as it's a legal system, then, but that's not our, that's not, has nothing to do with us. Now that person, we can just talk about lot sizes and what can fit on that lot. Now, if it can actually be done, now that goes into building department, it gets into the border health with, with septic and all that. I don't want to get into the whole what's below my feet. I just look at what my feet is standing on. That's what this department looks at. Once we've said, yes, you can build on this 15,000 square foot lot, now that person has to move on to the next department and make sure it conforms with all their bylaws, whether it be conservation, border health, building, all that.
I think we should try to move the commercial forward before anything else, so that that should be our goal.
I think that should be our goal, yeah.
Focus on getting that...
That brings in money, that brings in money and...
Right, let's bring in revenue.
Yeah, yeah, and, and like, like you said, there's a lot of layers to that. So that's something that, you know, Victoria's working on and it's our, and this is going to be, this board's focus for the next few months. Okay? We don't have to vote on anything on this, do we? That was just discussion, all right. Let's see, well, we have nothing else that came in within the last 48 hours. If there's anything else that any of you gentlemen would like to bring up, Victoria, if there's anything you want to bring up, if there's anything anybody wants to discuss, now would be the time to do so?
Just to maybe expand back up on a discussion a little bit, it's there. I mean, there are multiple things, I mean, we didn't go down through the other model. We went through the first, basically, it, some of the zoning districts, but recreational aspects. We've got two fairly different, fairly decent sized pieces of property that are now in the Acushna Fairland Trust. And I think, you know, we've had this conversation, we had a pretty lengthy one, you know, during the master plan, you know, of potential uses. And I don't know if we can reach out to these people and find out what their intent is.
For Keith's Farm.
For Keith's Farm, yep. We got it up by, we got it up by Brian's and the other one's down close to me that's on the, that's, who used to be my backyard, right?
Right, the tree farm.
Yep, the tree farm, that used to be my backyard when I was a kid.
And that's also part of Keith's Farm?
Yep, yep, you own two whole pieces of it.
Gotcha.
I know through the master plan process, our serpent, our consultant, was trying to get in touch with the Acushna Fairland Trust. I know they were trying to set a meeting, I'm not sure if that's been successful. So I can double check with them and see where they left at.
Yeah.
And let them know we want to keep pursuing that. Because I know through the master plan, like, there was some great discussion about the reuse of Keith's Farm and keeping, you know, wanting to maintain its still farm and, you know, public events there, that sort of thing.
I wish they would still farm it, honestly.
Yeah.
Honestly, it was a great thing for the town, the people really, you know, when he was open, people went there.
A lot of people.
That place used to get jammed because, and it was very popular and it's an outlet for people to go to in our own town. You know, you get the apple pizza, happens one time in a year. When you had Keith's going, from the time spring starts until the end of fall, that's continual business, you know, so...
But how do, now that nobody owns it, so now it's all been put over to the Acushna Fairland Trust, how would we... how would we, again, I'm just asking, cause I have no idea, how would that continue? Would somebody rent it or lease the property to continue farming it?
They were looking into people farming it, but, and I honestly don't know what happened, but for some reason that kinda came to a stop, and I do know that there were people that were interested, okay? But I, you know, I think the, I'm not gonna say, but I think they have other aspirations, the land trust. So, I really think it should be looked into about, yes, what do you plan on doing with the property? We'd like to know what is going on.
And it's gonna be part of our, you know, I think it's part of our, you know, you know, we're calling it commercial zoning all over the Lake Street.
Right.
You know, I think it's part of how we would have to look at that whole big package, cause it's also, you got your box company, right? And you've got tree farm, and then you've got that swath of land off of Leonard Street, right? He, he, in the back of there, you got the houses on Leonard Street heading, and when you head north, behind all that was all, he was turning, I believe that was turning into tree farm in the back.
Well, at one time, Keith owned the whole thing. And then, there was a, there's a strip where, right near the cemetery, there's an old dilapidated building. There's a strip that goes all the way to the water there that was given to the land trust. So that kinda divided up the two parcels. But now, with the land trust having all of it, what's gonna happen now?
I think there's a partnership that needs to be had with the, with the town, just for, from multiple, multiple levels. Because there's nothing better than I would like to see if you're talking about business, but agricultural-style.
Agricultural business.
Businesses in those areas.
Right.
You know, would be the focus, that would help keep, you know, that rural aspect of town.
Right.
Of the town.
That communal, that community thing, you know, that was happening there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's actually been a big loss, we still have people coming down there all the time, like, what happened?
Yeah.
They miss it.
Coming to pick some apples with their kids.
Yeah, apples, pumpkins, you know, you name it, and that's gone. You know, same thing with the vegetables, he was one of the biggest vegetable suppliers around here. He was supplying everybody, you know, and now that's gone.
Yeah, it would be nice to reach out and see what, if they have any plans or what they're thinking of doing with that.
I know they still don't have ownership of the property, it's still in probate.
Still, I thought they were just so done with that.
Yeah, I heard it was still in probate.
Okay.
Both pieces, or all of?
All of it.
All of it?
All of it, yep. And, I mean, they've already rehabbed some of the buildings, they've already put new roofs on them, they've already, so.
Really?
Yeah, so what is the plan?
If they're spending money on.
Something they really don't.
If they're fixing, yeah, if they're fixing, well, if they're spending money on updating the buildings, then they have something in mind. They're just not gonna do that for no reason.
Right, but what is that? I mean, what is, I guess sometimes I wonder, what is their mission for the land trust? What is their mission?
And who are they?
Right, exactly.
Who are they?
Who are they? I have no idea who they are.
And I'm gonna tell you what, with this thing with Keith, a lot of people are wondering, what is the mission of the land trust? What, what are they doing? I mean, when somebody gives them a property, who makes the decision, this is what's gonna happen to the property? You know, it's, from what I hear, they got a board, that's, that's what does that. But, you know, I think, I honestly think the people should have some kind of input too into what's going on here. You call it the cushioned, I mean, the Haven cushioned land trust, well, shouldn't the people have, it's public lands? Aren't they a public entity? I don't know, I'm trying to.
I'd like to get, get a little more information if you would please.
It, it's there, literally, that corner, you know where I grew up over there, that was my backyard.
Absolutely, the tree farm.
There's a hundred and fifty-six acres I've left, if I remember correctly back there, we used to, I used to go stomp it through. We just take, we used to be, half the time we were in a cushioned dump, get a half, we're out in the woods, running the old sand pits in the back, and that brings you all the way back to the Christian River.
And same thing with the other farm, that's a hundred and some odd acres.
Over there by you.
Yeah.
Right, the box company there.
So, you know, it's two huge pieces of property.
Yeah. That, that, you know, and up by there, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property in multiple ways and multiple things that could be.
Waterfront, everything.
Everything down there, you know, and I'm sure they, you know, they could be definitely, you know, I'm sure that they're thinking about, you know, what kind of venue they can put there to, to do so. And I think that is, you know, if we're gonna do some rezoning, I think that some of that stuff should be taken into consideration.
I totally agree, I totally agree.
You know, then, like I said, and the other one over there on Main Street, I don't know what it looks like back there now, but that, when you had the tree farm back there, that was it, I mean, I'm assuming that's gonna be, hopefully, a walking path, if nothing less back there for people who always.
Too bad you couldn't just keep the tree farm.
Yeah, but people, you know, depending on what, what you got going on, it's not saying it's even, you can't, you know, you put tree farm up, it's there, somebody wants to run it, but at least open to the public where you've got places to, to experience nature, off the beaten path, you know?
Agreed, agreed on.
So we're gonna try to have paths and make money at the same time, not revenue, so.
Well, yeah, and it's not even revenue for the town, so to speak, at that point, it's revenue for them. It's still part of, it's still part of our, it's still part of our town, you know?
Right.
Yeah, and what keeps this town what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, like I said earlier, our next meeting is Thursday, October 2nd. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.